We are on. Welcome, everybody, to the August 28, 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in Chatham, Massachusetts pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 833-544-462, or join the meeting through the link on the posted agenda on the town's website. This is live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, but despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue on our business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. And incidentally, you'd have to go up to the microphone when and if you're recognized, and essentially, people have up to five minutes to voice their concerns, and we will have a clock that will time you. If everybody that has a gadget that makes any noise whatsoever, if you could shut that down now and keep your conversations to one or two sentences, or take them into the hall, we would appreciate that. First, we start the meetings with a roll call vote of all board members. We ask if anybody is online, if they could just make sure that we can identify them, and Sarah Clark, to my right, will read the hearing notice. You, are your representative, will be able to present your appeal, our application, and you do so up at the microphone. Then, anyone in favor will have up to five minutes to voice their concerns and their favorable comments. After that, I will read all correspondences. Then, anyone who has a question or wants to speak against the application will have up to five minutes to do that, and the applicant will have a chance to rebut anything that they disagree with, that they heard, or clarify. Next, we will ask questions as board members, hear further information, and then we close the public hearing officially, and then deliberate. At that point in time, the public is not able to opine or ask questions unless they are recognized by someone on the panel that would like to hear from you, and that happens from time to time. Then, we deliberate, and we will vote on the application, and sometimes the vote could be whether or not to vote in favor, and once in a while, it will be to continue it to another date, but essentially, we always have a vote. All votes taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close by a verbal confirmation, and note the time of adjournment. So, at this point, we're going to do a roll call vote of all members, and everybody is going to say whether or not they approve of this form of meeting, because that's the rules. Dave Veitch?
David H. Veitch, and I approve of the format of this meeting.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Lee Howey, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBoer, and I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Partash, I approve as well. So, voting today, I believe, will be Virginia Fenwick, Steve DeBoer, is that correct? Lee Howey, David Nixon, and David Veitch. And I'm going to just sit here and read things. And we have a couple of people that are absent today, because usually, there's eight of us, but we can have the meeting as long as there's four, and we have more than four. So, let's see, do we have?
Minutes.
We do have minutes. So, we have approval of meeting minutes. The meeting was held on July 24, 2025. Ginny, would you?
Seventeen.
No? Oh, I'm sorry. I only have that on this paper. So, let's start with July 17. And we can do both unless anybody has any edits. Does anybody have any edits? You do. Okay, so let's just do July 17 first. Ginny?
I move to approve minutes dated July 17, 2025.
Which do I do first, second?
Second.
I will second and offer.
Turn your mic on, was the first thing, actually.
Oh, first, yeah. So, I second the motion and offer some minor corrections.
Please, go ahead.
On page four, and down just above the middle of the page, a line begins with Jackie Marcel, and it states that the project in Orleans, and it further references Orleans twice, in that, "I want to strike Orleans and put in the words Eastham."
Right. Yes, that makes sense.
And then, also fairly importantly, a little further down bullet point, beginning with Jeff Dykens, reiterate that the Orleans project has over, it says 300 applications to strike that and put 600 applications in its place.
Okay.
And then, on page five, again, just above the middle of the page, Mr. Seketti replied that, again, "strike Orleans and put Eastham in its place."
Right. Because, okay, with that, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Dave Nixon?
Yes.
I vote in favor.
Steve's in favor.
Ginny? Ginny's in favor.
Okay, very good. So, now, we're going to go to July 24. Ginny, do you want to move to approve those minutes?
I've moved to approve minutes dated July 24, 2025.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right, very good. So, now, we'll ask Sarah to read 25-024, the Parsons Family Revocable Trust, care of William G. Litchfield, 57 C. Miss Lane.
Application number 25-024, Parsons Family Revocable Trust, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 57 C. Miss Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 2A, Block 13, Lot 19. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling. The existing and proposed dwelling complies with the setback requirements, however, the lot is non-conforming, and that it contains five dwellings where one is allowed, and has zero feet of frontage where 100 feet is required. The existing building coverage is 3,362 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 3,440 square feet, where 2,950 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 37,700 square feet of land area and 26,223 square feet of buildable upland area in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of Protective Bylaw. This was continued from May 22, 2025.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicant, Pam Parsons, who is in the rear, together with our architect, Diana Zaglio of McPhee Associates. As Sarah indicated, we were before you on May 22, and at that time, several members asked that we consider whether it was possible to reduce the height of the height of the house, which we have done. It has been reduced by a foot, so that we are almost two and a half feet below the 30-foot height limit. So, I'll go into the, I won't go through the entire criteria, but I'll go into how those changes, I think, make it more possible for the board to approve the special permit. As to the adequacy of the site, as indicated in the hearing notice and as explained at the prior hearing, this house will be conforming as to all setback requirements, and is now 28 inches below the height limit, as I said, reduced by an additional foot, and the net coverage increases by only 78 square feet. As to compatibility of size, again, the goal was to increase the living area without significantly increasing the footprint. The only way to do that is to go up, but not as high as we had originally thought would be appropriate. Instead, we understand your concerns, and we've been responsive to them. All but one other property has a second floor, so going up is consistent with surroundings as to the extent of increase in nonconformities. It's minimal, just covered, 78 square feet, but we are conforming as to sidelines and compliant as to height. As to scale, setting mass views and vistas, the addition of the second floor, again, is consistent with the neighborhood, particularly as reduced. The scale remains appropriate. It is an attractive and appropriate design, and Diane is here to talk about that if you would like. There is essentially no impact on the streetscape due to the hedge in the west, with a very, very large motel to the east and very large homes to the west. And it is, as you know, in a private location. There are no views, individual or neighborhood or vistas which are involved. The change in putting on a second floor will allow the house to be more feasible for eventual year-round living by Pam, or for that matter, by future or additional members of her family in the future, because the goal is to continue to operate this as a cottage colony. There was some, there has been discussion within this board over what constitutes a neighborhood. If you compare this to the abutting properties, it remains consistent and smaller, and there is parenthetically significant neighborhood support. But if this site is viewed as its own neighborhood, which a couple of you suggested because of its isolation, it's extremely hard to see how updating one of the five family-owned cottages is detrimental to a family-owned neighborhood when they are proponents. So, the issue, as you know, is whether the reconstruction of one and only one of the five family-owned cottages nearly on the existing footprint as reduced in height is substantially more detrimental. Again, coverage increases marginally. With five dwellings, though, the combined living area and gross floor area is far less than that of the single-family homes to the west on comparably-sized lots. And on the third page, I added our easterly abutter on a much larger lot, but that's a motel. So, if we're trying to be compatible, we are very small compared to that. I also want to point out some changes to the bylaw made since 1981, which were designed to prevent condominium conversion or sales on a single-family basis of former cottage colonies, as occurred at adjacent cottage colonies as well as throughout the town. The Parsons family did not want to do that before 1981, does not want to do it now, and in any event, to respond to a concern that I understand some of you may have, cannot do so now. There is insufficient land area, and while your board can't bind future boards, you can make it plain in a favorable decision that further proposals, and none are contemplated, but further proposals for other colonies that the Parsons family owns would not be well-received. So, we are increasing living space without significantly worsening coverage with, I think, what you can find to be an appropriate design, will enable the family to continue to enjoy and operate this property, as they've done since 1959 and, again, in 1981, when the town meeting voted to constrain cottage colony conversions. That could be read to as an understanding that the voters thought that preservation and continued cottage colony operation was a good thing, that that goal will at least be marginally served by the approval of the special permit. I'd be happy to go into the revisions that we've made. The essential one is dropping the height by one foot, as you requested. The topography makes it somewhat challenging, because we're at the top of a slope, but we are also lower than the houses further back on C. Miss. So, I don't think it's going to be a problem for those neighbors. And again, neighbors have written in support. There are, as I understand it, some additional neighbor letters, which the chair will read. So, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions, but recognizing that you have a long afternoon, I wanted to be relatively brief, at least for me.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody here or online that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. There are four, three in favor, and one, we'll see. Okay, so, on August 2, we received correspondence from Tiffany Hubanks and Alfred Woods, 34 C. Miss Lane. They are neighbors of Pamela Parsons residing at 34 C. Miss. They understand that there had been a hearing on May 22, and they now want to make sure that we understand that they, let's see, I'm sorry, "We find the proposed new home a welcome addition to our neighborhood. The architectural design is in keeping with the surrounding homes, and similar to the recently approved project at 48 C. Miss. As full-time residents in our community, we fully support and welcome Ms. Parsons as a full-time resident in our neighborhood. We encourage the board to approve the project." Next, we have a note from Sierra and Ronald Marino, received on July 3, 2025, regarding ZBA application 25-024. "We take no issue with the proposal as submitted. In a telephone conversation with the owner of record, Pamela Parsons, on or about June 22, 2025, we discussed our immediate concerns and requirements with her proposal, and she's agreed to address those needs as first steps in her project. Those needs included removal and disposal of her shed on Nantucket Sound Shore's property, and to remove and not store any furniture, building materials, rental house furnishings, new or broken furniture, hoses, storage containers, or pods from her rental business where they would be in plain view of our guests at 37 C. Miss. We request that, as a condition in the approval process, include the future storage requirements/needs be staged on the south-facing side of the proposed new home. With that stipulation noted, we are in support of the application." Now, we have a note from Robert LVsos, 396 Pleasant Street. He's the owner of the Tides Hotel on Pleasant Street, and they reviewed the plans and are fully in support. That was received on June 9, 2025. July 8, 2025, we have a note from Cynthia Waters, trustee 46 and 48, C. Miss Lane, writing to support. "This project will represent an improvement for C. Miss Lane and be consistent with our other homes in the neighborhood. No issue with the view blockage. I believe the project will be an asset to the community." That concludes our correspondences. Is there anybody here that has a question or wishes to speak against this application? If so, make it known. No? Nobody. Okay, questions from the board. David Veitch?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Nixon?
I do. The two sheds in the back of the property, as I understand it, the larger shed, which is the closest one to the house, will be eliminated. I also understand from talking to a gentleman that was on the property, that the other shed, which is over into, I think it's the Marino property, that there's some question about that. Do you know what the question is?
Certainly, I can respond to that, Mr. Nixon. Thank you. I actually have, and presented to you at the prior hearing, a letter from the attorney for the Marino family indicating that that shed could remain. Having said that, if the Marinos would like it moved off of their property, it is a shed of considerably under 100 square feet. I'm not sure whether the existing shed can be picked up and moved, because it's not in good shape, but a replacement structure of less than 100 square feet would not be a coverage issue, and I believe it could be located a third of the setback, which is eight and a third feet from the sideline. So, we would anticipate that that shed would be removed.
So, yeah, the condition of it is really poor as far as rust out and things like that. So, we understand from what you've just said, I think, that it will be demolished and possibly rebuilt as a brand-new shed.
The Marinos have requested that it be removed, and we will do so.
Okay.
So, yes, we're saying the same thing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Lee, questions?
Just want to confirm. On the plans here, it says there's a deck, and it says, under deck storage, deck storage access, there's a section here, and then, looking at the plans, the basement is a full basement, and it looks like they've got some good access to the basement as well, just for storage purposes. Is that, can you?
That is correct. Diana could certainly respond further, but I think we will have sufficient storage area in the house. But if we'd like the shed, we would like to retain or have a shed, it will be not on the Marino property.
Thank you.
Steve, questions?
One sort of very minor design question, and then one other question. The awning windows that are above the stained glass window, are they getting any sort of window treatment? Was that just left off the?
I'm not sure that that has been contemplated, or whether Diana, you would like to try to respond, maybe after you consult with Pam.
It's not going to affect my opinion, but I don't know if it was left off the drawing, or it's a mistake, or whatever.
You can't talk to the audience, just so you know. You have to come all the way up to the mic, state your name, if you would.
My name is Diana Zaglio. I'm the architectural designer from McPhee Associates. And, yes, so they were not left off the drawing. That space is going to be an art studio. Pam does stained glass work, so her idea was to be able to put stained glass pieces in the windows to feel see-through, so therefore, no grills, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Sure.
And then, the other question I was going to ask, and Bill, you may have already addressed this, but is there any sort of deed restriction that could be put in place to, or to govern these other houses that are on this lot, or is there anything, is there anything in place now?
There is a longstanding restriction executed years ago by the family in regard to the number of bedrooms on the property. The zoning bylaw in this board are effectively a deed restriction on any further changes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And Ginny, your turn.
Mr. Litchfield, do you know the site plan? There's the image of the proposed dwelling, and then, you know, underneath that, behind that, if you will, that dotted dashed rendering of the current house. Do you see that?
I'm not sure.
It's kind of hard to see. It's in the, it's sort of a...
I see the dotted line is shown there, if that's what we're talking about.
Yes, the dotted line of the current home.
Correct.
Does that, do you know if that includes the deck? There's currently a deck on that house, but it doesn't, the configuration from my memory of that deck doesn't look like it's.
I've been out there numerous times, and to be perfectly honest, I can't answer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. I just would say that, you know, we very much appreciate working, that you work with the Marino family, because they've been in here before, and, you know, it means a lot to them, I'm sure. So, with that, Ginny, would you like to close the public hearing and move into deliberations?
Yes, I move to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right. Well, that's unanimous. Lee, deliberate.
I think this is an application that I can accept or approve. I like the fact that there's some extra storage under the deck and in the basement, which will possibly, you know, help the shed situation. But, yeah, I could vote in favor.
And Steve?
Yeah, I don't see any issues with this. I'm glad that, you know, they were able to make a concession about the height of the building, and I think everything else looks like a nice project.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, initially, I had a number of concerns, but I believe that Attorney Litchfield and his clients have done what they can to make it a better deal, and so it no longer, to me, would be significantly detrimental to the neighborhoods. So, I will be voting yes.
Very good. And Mr. Veitch?
Yeah, I was in favor of it before, and I'm still in favor of it. And I think, and I think it sounds like, you know, moving the, if the shed is on the Marino property, moving it off is appropriate. I would say that I think some of their other requests are a little beyond what we should be getting involved in, you know, talking about storage and not being able to do it in the backyard or putting pods in. And I just don't see that that's something that we should be, I mean, that's, if they want to have an arrangement with their neighbor, that's fine, but I don't think that's anything.
I can, Carl, 100%.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to make sure we stay in our lane. We'll talk about that later. And Ginny?
So, I, we're very familiar with that area. We've approved some... We've approved some other, we've heard other houses in that area that are all trying to expand. It was a cottage community. So, I did have concerns at the prior hearing about the mass of it, because the height was higher, and I also had concerns about what would happen to the rest of them. So, Mr. Litchfield has addressed that concern. I would be in favor, though, of putting the, my understanding is we can't deed restrict it, but we could make the note about, because the increase is, it's pretty substantial, and the lot is small, and if the other four houses at some future ownership point in time, I would, I would not like to see those remaining cottages increase in size to the extent that the first one has. So, that, and then also, the reason I was asking Mr. Litchfield about the, whether the deck was shown in the previous rendering is because when I was looking initially at the proposed, it looked like, vis a vis the current, which is hard to see, but it's the square dotted line image, it looked like it was doubling in size. And I think part of that is because of the deck that's showing on the new house, and that's why I was wondering if there was really, there is a deck in that current house, and I don't think it's included here. So, compared to what they have now and what they're, the footprint isn't really changing, and Mr. Litchfield really sort of confirmed that with the fact that it's only 78 square feet. So, all of that to say that last time, my concern was, it was the mass of the structure as shown here in these images and in the site plan, and the height. Together, those two things make it really massive in a cottage community. But the follow-up from this meeting, the lowering of the height, and the comments that Mr. Litchfield has made about future development of the other properties, that was my main concern last time, do make me feel better this time.
Okay, yes, Mr. Litchfield?
Just to, thank you, very briefly, there is a deck according to the existing cottage. According to the assessors, it's 112 square feet on the present cottage, just to answer your question.
And I don't think it's shown here, because the home is a square, and this is a square. I'm not seeing a deck. So, all that to say that I think when we're comparing the proposed dwelling visually to what's on the site plan, the change is not that much more.
Did you want to clarify anything, Sarah?
So, Ms. Fenwick, as Attorney Litchfield had mentioned, the Parsons or any future owners would not be able to expand these cottages without first coming to the Board of Appeals. So, I don't know if it's necessary to condition that they have to come back for any other changes, because they would already have to do that.
Okay. And speaking of conditions, I just read that portion of the letter. So, they want us, I should say, the Marinos would like us to condition it that all storage would be on the south side of the property, but I don't think that that is, there's no universe where we could do that for many, many reasons. First of all, this is their property, and they can put whatever they want, you know, within the bounds of the law, wherever they want to put it. So, that's great that they had a conversation and that Ms. Parsons had already agreed to that. So, that's the way that's going to have to roll. So, with all that being said, yes, did you want to say something, Mr. Nixon?
Well, yeah, the wordage that Mr. Litchfield put in... Thank you. He said, "We can make it plain, we, the board, that this decision is for this specific, and that further proposals, and not are contemplated, will not be well-received." Now, do we want to put that in, or is that speaking for another board at another time, and maybe we should not be putting that in? I mean, we sort of understand that, but...
That's what I would, I mean, I think that, you know, we've come to understand that we can't bind a future board.
Right, right.
And so, I think we leave it so that they interpret our decision and act as they would without us trying to further...
Mr. Litchfield, do you think we need to add anything to a decision, or is that sufficient?
I think not. We have a fair degree of institutional memory in the board. Some members of the board for quite some time, and Sarah is nowhere near retirement, nor is the chair, so I don't think it's required.
Okay. None of us can predict the future. You know, we're here at the leisure of the select board, so it doesn't matter how old we are, how young we are. But does anyone else on this side of the room want to opine on that topic?
I like the idea of, it's not a deed restriction, but it's a comment. I don't, and it is, it is, and I think it was a concern last time. It remains, that part does remain a concern of mine, so I would like to add it.
Okay. We can't even bind our own board, if I'm not mistaken, because we have different people voting at different times. Steve or Jenny, anything on that? No? Lee, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Nope? Okay. So, what about conditions in terms of, you know, seasonal construction? What would you like to do with that?
The standard conditions would be appropriate. I would think, no, the parking is a bit of an issue anyway. We obviously have room on our property to do some work. I didn't do the full title, so I don't know who owns Seamist south of the cul-de-sac that's on paper, but let me just take a quick look at that. The cul-de-sac is not ours. We have a right of way to Seamist, so on the property, we could live with that, on the property or permission of abutters.
Okay. And with regard to what Jenny wanted to see on the decision, Sarah Sitchell noted on the decision. Just make a note of it. Would that be all right? Because otherwise, I wanted to see if Steve or Jenny, you know, had, Steve or Lee wanted to decide whether, how they were going to vote, because it would be, right now, it would be possibly three to two. So, if Sarah just notes that, Jenny, are you okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Okay. Very good. So, at this point, Jenny, do you want to move to approve?
I move to approve application number 25-024 as submitted with the following conditions. The board, I'm sorry, all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and between June 30th and labor date, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
David seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay. Next, we're going to go to 25-059, Giselle Limontani, 114 Secuanset Road, Chatham, Mass. And I believe the applicant is going to present herself. And I am correct on that?
Application number 25-059, Giselle Limontani, 114 Secuanset Road, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 107 Secuanset Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 8D Block 7 Lot R10. The applicant proposes to install exterior mechanical system appliances. The proposed generator will be located 7.2 feet from Geranium Drive, and the proposed AC condenser will be located 6.8 feet from Geranium Drive, where a 25-foot setback is required. The property contains 11,187 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Ma'am, welcome. Please just state your name and...
I'm Giselle Limontani, and I'm here to describe what we're trying to accomplish. The zoning board previously approved a special permit to enable us to construct an addition and renovate a cottage that was built in 1960 that basically had no utilities practically to speak of. And at the time, we didn't have a plan for the heating and AC when we came to you previously. So, we have now got an AC heating contractor in, and they propose to put the gas line on the paper road. The Geranium Drive is actually a paper road extension that was never built side of the cottage, and so the gas line will be there, and so placing a generator there, since it's a year-round residence, made sense. In our existing house, we originally had a gas line running through the entire basement of our house, and later found out that wasn't such a great idea. So, we've proposed to locate the generator on the side of the garage, close to where the gas meter will be tucked in behind an indentation of the garage. And the house was approved to be 4.6 feet from the paper road, and as you may recall from the previous discussions, the paper road is an abandoned road that essentially becomes the property of the two abutters. And so, we're, it's not, it's not actually a real road, just to be clear. So, anyway, so the house will be 4.6 feet from the paper road, and construction is well underway. And I've spoken with my neighbors, and they're all pretty happy about it. It maximizes the distance from any neighbor by putting them there, those mechanicals there. And so, the distances from the paper road will be greater than the distances of the dwelling from the paper road, and we'll be landscaping to shield the generator from view, and also restoring the paper road with nice vegetation, as much native vegetation as we can, so that's...
Okay. So, because we don't know what the Attorney General is going to decide, as you already know, we might have a change in our bylaw, whether or not this needs to be a special permit, or it needs to be a variance, we don't know, so we're not going to go through the criteria, because we don't know what it is yet.
Right.
So, we're going to do questions from the board and go through the procedures, and then we're going to at least move to continue this to another date at the end of this hearing. You already know that, though, right?
Yes, and I guess the only question I had was whether you would at least take a straw poll to see...
I think, we'll just do that next time. We'll just do that next time, because we don't know what we're voting on. We don't know if this is a special permit or, well, maybe, let's see what Sarah says. She's nicer than I am.
So, the town has yet to hear back from the Attorney General and the bylaw amendments that were approved by town meeting at this year's annual town meeting. We do expect to hear back soon, but as of 1:45 today, we had not heard back. So, if the Attorney General's office approves the bylaw which would allow mechanical units to be placed within the setbacks by special permit, then this application could go forward. If, for some reason, the Attorney General does not approve the bylaw amendments, this would have to be a variance, and in that case, the applicant would need to withdraw their request for the special permit and apply for either a variance or find a different location on the property that met the required setbacks.
So, with that, we're not going to do a straw poll today, because it doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Okay, so that's your presentation. We appreciate that. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that would just speak in fever of the idea of this? No? Very good. We have a note from our health agent. I'm going to just go out on a limb and say she doesn't care about this. Let's see. "I have no concerns regarding this application," from Judy Giorgio, received August 21, 2025. That concludes our correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question or would like to speak against the idea of this application? No? Questions from the board? Are there any? Yes, Mr. Nixon?
I have a question for you. I was very surprised that they, as you referred to, what's the paper road?
I'm sorry. Thank you. That the paper road had been clear-cut, and I don't know who did that, and perhaps you do, perhaps you don't, but...
It was covered with invasives and poison ivy and overgrown trees that were leaning quite substantially towards the cottage. So, we spoke with the neighbor on the other side about removing the large pine trees that were leaning towards the cottage and cleaning up the vegetation with the intention of replanting it with species that were more beneficial to the environment.
Did you get permission from anyone in the town? Because that is owned by the Town of Chatham, correct?
Well, my understanding is that when a paper road has been abandoned for more than 21 years, that the town no longer owns it and that it's owned virtually by the two abutters.
Hmm. And that's your understanding, but you don't have a legal document to state that, huh?
Well, I wish Bill were the one representing me on this, but do, Mr. Litchfield?
Yes, yes.
There's a word for this, isn't there, Mr. Litchfield?
If I could, Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield, I've worked with Giselle in the past, although I'm not representing her today, because she's very capable. That portion of the paper road was not taken by the town when the town did the taking in 1960. So, that little spur is owned, the fee underneath it is owned by the abutters, of whom they are one.
Oh, really? Okay. And you had the permission of the other abutter?
Yes, absolutely. Michael Breslin.
Okay. And your plan is to return that with...
Better vegetation than overgrown poison ivy and leaning pine trees with ivy growing all over them, yeah.
Thank you.
We will make it attractive and beneficial.
All right. Anybody on this side of the room have a question? No? What about Japanese, those Japanese pines? No, overgrow? What do you call those? Knotweed?
Oh, God.
Ms. Fenwick is an expert on that.
There was just, it was really a mess.
Okay. I was just curious, because I think you have to dig six feet to get those. That would be a lot.
Well, John Martin excavated to remove some of that and dig the electrical and whatever, so some of it's growing back already, because it just takes an incredibly long time. But I'm working with someone who's been a master gardener for over 25 years, and she has a friend who has a garden full of natives, and I'm going to do the best I can.
Sounds like it's going to be, you're going to make it better, so...
Definitely will be better.
Yeah. Oh, very good, very good. So, at this point, Jenny, we would do a motion to move this hearing, continue to, what date, Sarah?
Our next available meeting, which we hope we have heard back from the Attorney General by then, would be September 11th.
Right. Okay. So, Jenny?
I appreciate it.
I move to close the hearing and move to, I'm sorry.
Just to continue the application.
Continue, okay. I move to continue application 25-059 to September...
11th.
11th.
2025.
David seconds and votes yes.
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 Okay, very good. See you then.
Thank you.
All right. Third application today is 22 Taylor's Pond Road, Barbara D. Rybeck, 2004 Insurance Trust, 25-060, care of William F. Riley.
Application number 25-060, Barbara R. Rybeck, 2024 Insurance Trust, care of William F. Riley, Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 22 Taylor's Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 5C Block 32 Lot J5. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 15.1 feet from the road, 13.7 feet from the western abutter, 13.2 feet from the northern abutter, and partially within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 11. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 7.7 feet from the road and partially within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the reconfiguration of a driveway and installation of fencing as allowed by special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,968 square feet, 29.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,774 square feet, 41.6%, where 15%, but not more than 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and then it contains 6,667 square feet of buildable upland and 11,725 square foot of land area where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Protective Bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Riley.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Dean Rybeck and his family. The, in addition... In addition to myself, we have Dave Clark, who's the engineer on the project, Mike Seegan, who's the landscape architect, and somewhere we have Jeff Bray, who's the architect. Jeff, are you online? Okay, Jeff is not online.
Somebody is there.
I am.
Yep. He's there.
I am.
Oh, good, all right, great. The, all right, so Dean Rybeck, who is also online today, his family's owned this property for many years, and Dean has accessibility issues. He was in an accident many years ago, and so he has some physical limitations. They decided to redesign the house to help deal with those issues. And I'll ask Jeff Bray to go through the design process he did with Dean and his family and how this current design addresses those concerns. Yeah, that's the house. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you.
Speak up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
If you could speak up, sir, we can't really hear you. Turn your volume up. I'll get closer to the mic. Now we can't hear you at all.
Now?
Now, yes.
Okay. Jeff Bray, Bray Architects, 49 Lexington Street, New Britain, Connecticut. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to work again with the Rybeck family, who have owned this property since just before 1970. We first looked at doing a major renovation of the existing house, but it quickly became evident that it could not meet the Rybeck's needs in lifestyle. The house we are proposing will be better in many ways. The existing house has a full basement at elevation 6. Well, the flood zone elevation is 11. We are proposing an unoccupied crawl space at elevation 11. The proposed house is rotated away from the present location, providing more space for storm surge to occupy without doing damage. We are meeting their living needs on the ground floor level in order to address Dean's accessibility issues, with only a partial second floor having two bedrooms and a shared bath. The oversized house of the, the overall size of the house is actually smaller than the existing. Who does that these days? According to Dave Clark's calculations, the difference is actually pretty significant. The overall size reduces from 3,888 square feet on three floors to 2,709 square feet on one and a half floors. That's a reduction of almost 1,200 square feet. While the amount of outside living or deck space does increase very slightly from 663 square feet to 811, that's a very modest gain of only 148 square feet. As you approach the house from the entry or east side, it really is more like a one-and-a-half story high at 24 feet to the ridge, while remaining less than the height of 30 feet from the lowest adjacent grade on the pond or west side. The house will comfortably nestle into the hillside, and due to the adjacent town-owned property to the south on Taylor Pond Road, the site will remain quite secluded and private, much like the existing home does. As an older and more mature architect, I am generally appreciative when referred to as a classicist or a preservationist, which also means that I still think design and draw in pen and pencil. But we do do CAD systems to generate construction and permit documents. The style of the home pays homage to the shingle-style summer homes of over 100 years ago, intending to be of the site rather than on the site. While the exterior materials of naturally weathering red and white cedar and copper will blend seamlessly with the location, the rest will meet today's code requirements for heating, cooling, and lighting efficiencies, and structural reinforcement to withstand hurricane and blizzard winds. The deep overhangs and partially covered decks are there to make use of the strong summer sun for natural lighting, while also controlling its glare and heat to make this a comfortable and efficient summer home. The Rybeck's next generation have recently completed their schooling, and the hope is that they will continue for decades to come here and call this home, this their home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So the, I think, the most significant change here really is the reduction in mass of the building, because the second story is so compact and of modest size. And I know that's always a major concern, so I just wanted to highlight that. Run through the criteria now. So adequacy of the size of the site for the proposed use. Obviously, the existing, the site already has an existing home on it, and the, all the footprint gets a little bit bigger. We do meet, the building itself meets the setbacks. The roof overhangs, which Jeff just referred to, do encroach a little bit into the sideline The compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, we've attached a list of close-by properties with gross floor areas. And as Jeff mentioned, our gross floor area is being reduced by over 1,000 square feet. So we believe that we are compatible with the neighborhood in terms of size and mass. Extended proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure or use. We think the only increase in nonconformity is the fact that the roof overhangs go into the sideline setbacks. We have less living area than usual, so that the normal increase in nonconformity of increased living area does not apply in this case. The suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff, I think it's, the site is suitable for this based on the new design and how we are built to FEMA standards. And the likelihood of damage to other properties as a result of storm damage is greatly reduced by the current design, although the property is adjacent to the coastal bank, and we have Taylor's Pond just down the hill. The designs take care of all the drainage within the limits of the lot. So we believe it is suitable for the proposed construction. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on the neighboring properties, we believe that because of the reduction in the size of the second floor, we believe that this is a structure that's going to improve the streetscape, and certainly, you know, presents a view from Taylor's Pond which is much more in keeping with the neighborhood visual character. And it does not block anyone's views or vistas. The applicant believes it's an improvement in the streetscape, and that the proposed building is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing building. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses, it's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood, so it is compatible. Method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, so this, we are providing a brand-new septic system, so we believe that's, there's an improvement there. Source of water remains public, and drainage is taken care of within the four corners of the lot. We believe there will be no change in traffic flow safety. In fact, there's actually a reduction of one bedroom, where the existing home is a five-bedroom home, this is a four-bedroom home. Noise and litter, there will be no change in noise and litter as a result of the project. And utilities and other public services are adequate. That'd be our presentation, Madam Chairman.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this project? Please raise your hand. Seeing none.
Just want to remind the members, we do have the landscape architect, if you have questions for him as well.
Yep, thank you. I will read the correspondences. There are four, starting with Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She tells us on 8/21/2025, she's reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild the dwelling. The Board of Health has not seen the proposed septic plans, floor plans for existing dwellings are needed, to confirm that there are four existing bedrooms. Next, we have a note from Spru from the Planning Board, and this was on July 31, 2025. The Planning Board reviewed the request for comment, and after review, the board voted seven to zero to send a positive recommendation, with the condition that the driveway be constructed of a permeable material in a manner which, I think I asked that we don't have that happen. The proposed project will reduce the square footage of driveway within the Conservancy District as identified as 22 Taylor's Pond Road. Board members voting in favor were Spru, Catherine Halpern, Warren Chain, Robert Wirthshafter, Shalyn Greenhall, and Frank Scherer and Bob Dupus. And so that is that. Next, we have a note from the Conservation Commission, received on July 28, 2025. And with revisions, the project will be conditioned to meet the performance standard of the Wetlands Protection Act. Next, we have a note from Roger and Carol Nail, 227 Cockle Cove Road. They are owners of three properties near the above property under construction, under consideration, I apologize, for a special permit for conforming issues. Having reviewed the proposed amendments, we have no objections. We know the Rybeck's well and confident that they will be, this will be an excellent addition to the Cockle Cove neighborhood. Sometimes we do have things that are under construction, so I just want to make sure that this is not one of them. Now, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question? Yes, sir, please go up to the mic.
Ryan Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I guess my, I have some questions about the permeable driveway.
What did you question about that?
How long, is there any maintenance required to keep it permeable?
That is not the kind of thing that we educate the public on, actually.
Was that, I guess it's for more of like an engineer, because if it's something that needs maintenance or something to keep it permeable, and it's not done, and it becomes impermeable, I think would be an issue being in a flood zone.
Yeah, well, I'll let Mr. Riley, do you have any other questions, sir?
Just about the permeable and maybe maintenance required, and, you know, what if it does become non-permeable?
Okay, that's, okay, Mr. Riley, go ahead.
Typically something we deal with at the Conservation Commission. I don't know what form of permeability the Rybeck's intend on using. There are several different forms.
Right.
You know, gravel, permeable concrete, pervious asphalt, a lot of different ways of doing it, and I don't think that decision's been made yet.
Right, okay.
But whatever maintenance is required will be provided.
Sure, okay. Anything else, sir?
And then I guess I'm going to stay consistent and say I don't think people should be building stuff in flood zones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where am I? Anybody else wishes to have a question or speak against, either here or on Microsoft Teams? Now's the time. Seeing none. Questions from the board? Let's start with David Nixon.
So, Mr. Riley, the site plan I have shows a proposed dwelling that was marked out with stakes very carefully, and yet is not part of this application. Had it been, I have no idea what the proposed dwelling is envisioned, but all your numbers would be changed and would kind of change the whole project. So, number one, is this a mistake that was on the site plan? Number two, is it coming down the street? We just have to wait six months, 12 months?
For what?
Is it going to be part of this property?
It's not going to be part of the property, because the lots are in separate ownership, and they're going to remain that way. They're owned by family members, so it's part of the same Rybeck family. Lot four, the proposed garage with, I don't know if it's going to have an apartment above it or not. I know they're planning on having bedrooms there. Does not require ZBA approval, so that's why it's not part of the application. We are going through conservation for it, though.
So Lot four is owned by a different family member, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, they hold title in a different form, that's all I can say. Part of this is owned by Mr. Rybeck's mother and her trust, and the other one is owned by another family member. But just for whatever it's worth, if the Rybeck's wanted to, they could build a whole house up there. It's a conforming lot, they could just put a house there if they wanted to. You know, they need a garage, they don't have a room on this space, on the lower lot for a garage, so they're proposing a building there for the garage.
So even though it's on a different lot, the use of it will be for your clients?
Well, yes, my client and his family, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Veatch, questions?
Yeah, well, I had noticed that, too, and I was going to ask if it's, assuming it's a by-right proposition. And I just want to clarify, though, with you or with Dave, that as far as any of the calculations and numbers and things, we have, there are two adjacent lots here. The lot coverage numbers and everything are all based on the lot that has the house on it now.
Yeah, Lot five.
So those numbers and the numbers that we've been presented in comparison and things are on that lot and specific to that lot.
That's correct. In fact, the, in speaking with Sarah during the application process, there is a fence or a wall that crosses the property line and a retaining wall, and so Sarah wanted to make sure that there was going to be an easement between the two property owners that would allow the existing wall to continue, assuming everything's approved today. That's been part of our conservation application. We submitted both applications to the Conservation Commission at the same time. They, in their infinite wisdom, separated them, so we're doing them at different meetings. So we've been trying to present it as a single project.
Okay, and I guess the only thing that's running through my head to a certain degree is, in looking at comparisons of numbers of square footage and gross square footage and things, you know, I don't, I might think, well, ultimately, on the two lots, the gross square footage, et cetera, is going to include both buildings from what's there now. But as a separate lot and a by-right development on the other lot, I don't see that that's really, I'm not sure, I'm thinking a little bit now, not questioning. Anyway, that's all I think I had for questions from the board.
Well, just further clarification, I mean, the Rybeck family could build, you know, an entire new single-family residence on that lot that, you know, maximum square footage and things... and things, and they've opted not to do that. And one of the, in our discussions with the Conservation Commission, we've pointed out that by limiting their development on Lot Four, the way they have, a significant portion of Lot Four is going to remain undisturbed and green space. So we think that the way they've decided to develop this is actually beneficial to the neighborhood.
And I would add, is going to conform better to the floodplain regulations with respect to the foundation.
Well, that's true. And, you know, if you added the two lots together, the house becomes a very small, small percentage of the total lot area as well.
Lee?
No questions.
And Steve?
Yeah, I was a little confused about this other proposed dwelling, but I think you could explain that very well, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Ginny?
Where is the fourth bedroom on the proposed house? It says it's a proposed five-bedroom, existing five-bedroom, proposed four-bedroom, but I didn't see four bedrooms in the floor plan.
Pardon?
In the floor plan. I didn't see four bedrooms. Maybe I missed it.
The, I'm dependent upon reading the information on the site plan, which is what says there were existing five bedrooms.
Okay, we, help is on the way.
Dave Clark?
Help is on the way.
Mr. Clark, you say, we know you've got.
Thank you. David Clark, Clark Engineering. The floor plan was just up on the screen, the first floor plan. Lower right-hand corner, office, under border health regulations, that qualifies, that space qualifies as a bedroom. So that's why the site plan calls out four.
So the office is the fourth bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Riley, I thought you, I heard you say that the overhangs, which are generous on this design, are encroaching on the setbacks.
That's correct.
But they're not exceeding the setbacks, correct? I didn't see in the narrative where it was going beyond the required 15 feet or anything.
Yeah, they, if you look on the site plan, the, so, on the south side of the site plan, so where the, on the Taylor's Pond roadside, the site plan says 19.2 feet to propose cornerboard. And then, just next to that, it says 16.7 to the proposed roof. So there's an encroachment there of, you know, two and a half feet or so into the sideline setback by the roof, not the building.
Right, but it's still under, it's still within the 15.
That's correct. And on the north side, you can see proposed cornerboard 15.5, where the proposed roof is 12.2.
So that one is.
Well.
South side is a street setback. 25 feet.
Okay. Dave just pointed out that the south side, even though we have this huge area between the street and the houses, actually would require a 25-foot setback because it's a street side. But, yeah, so the point is that the roof overhang encroaches a couple of feet deeper into the sideline setback than the building does, or the, or that the walls of the building do.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you for confirming that. So I understand that Lot Four is not before us to hear today, but, you know, it's on the site plan and the driveway goes right to it. So it's presumably, that's a garage, I think you said.
That's correct, yeah. And we showed it this way because we want, we're not trying to hide anything. We want to, you know, and we tried, we filed both of these simultaneously with the Conservation Commission because they're really tied together on the conservation side.
Yeah.
Because it's coverage within the.
So does the garage need, is the garage allowed to have more bedrooms above it?
Well, theoretically, it would be, because it's on a legal lot with legal, with sufficient area, you know, it could be, it would be considered as a dwelling, kitchen.
So it could have more bedrooms?
It could have more bedrooms, yeah. But Dave Clark got the answer.
We went round and round with this for months before we finalized the plan. The idea was to get some more bedrooms on the adjacent property. If we didn't put a kitchen in it, we would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit because it's an accessory structure, not a single-family dwelling. So, and the same with the garage. We initially just laid it out as a garage, but we require a special permit, accessory structure on a, on a separate lot. So we put the kitchen in, and it becomes a single-family dwelling. It's just a two-car garage below, two bedrooms above. Under the border health regulations, we can only have two bedrooms. We can't have three with treatment because the lot's below 20,000 square feet. So two bedrooms is all we get on that property. And Bill had mentioned that the lot could be developed in other ways. In fact, when the Rybex family bought the lot in 2000, I think, the previous owner went through the process of going through conservation and getting a permit for a three-bedroom house on the property that was close to 2,000 square feet in footprint. The lot's 14,000, a little over 14,000 square feet. That site plan showed that 11,000 square feet of that lot was getting disturbed to build that house, and that's not something the Rybex wanted. They wanted to keep it tight to the other property because it's kind of a compound kind of thing, and have a much smaller building that would be allowed than what would be allowed by right. So a lot of careful planning went into this to limit the site disturbance. They're keeping that large vegetated buffer along Cockle Cove Road, and we're working with conservation to come up with some language that, as far, as long as the Rybex own the property, that area will remain undisturbed.
Okay, so I think, before you go, Dave, so I understand that. It's the two lots, the one lot is not before us, but the two together, the broader plan, the redevelopment of it, is going to have an overall less footprint than if you could, if you did build a second dwelling there, which you could do. So I appreciate that, and I think, Mr. Riley, that's, you mentioned that, that it's an overall lower footprint. But our, okay, so, all right, so I wanted to just, I just wanted to reconfirm that with you, Dave. So it'll go to six bedrooms, really. I know we're not talking about the fourth lot, but essentially, what was presented is a little confusing because you're saying it's going to five bedrooms. It's really going to go to six overall, but that's still better than having seven, really, like another home. So just want to make sure I understood. You can't do more than two, but you are planning to do two.
And the other property, I believe that's five existing, and we're going down to four, and we're providing treatment for that septic system.
Yeah. Okay, and then I just wanted to make the comment that what was presented by the architect as a reduction in gross floor area is true, but the garage is part of the existing house, and that's going over there. So it's really, it's not as much of a reduction as was kind of.
With all due respect, if you take the whole 14,000 square feet of Lot Four.
Yeah.
As a percentage, it becomes a very minor number. I mean, so in other words, don't just take the gross floor area without considering the fact that it's on its own 14,000 square-foot lot.
That I understand, and I think that that's really positive. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that it's not really a 1,200-square-foot reduction in gross floor area because the garage is going away, but it's just moving over there.
Well, I know, but it's, for what's under your review today, it is going away.
Okay, that's all I have.
Well, I mean, I mean, the building, if you look at the rendering, again, you know, the building is less mass and is smaller than the existing building.
Well.
So, thank you.
Hold on.
I don't think that's accurate. It's not smaller than the existing building.
It's not smaller than the existing building, but it's not.
It has less gross floor area by 1,000 square feet, over 1,000 square feet.
Because you're eliminating the basement, which you have to.
See, now, I've been arguing for years, we shouldn't be using the basement for gross floor area because you can't see it.
We use whatever the rules are in Chatham.
I understand. And that's all I'm saying is, so we should be treated equally. So no basement, reduction in gross floor area should be applauded.
Okay, that's all I have.
Do you want to applaud him, Ginny? No, no? All right, well, Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I wanted to ask our building commissar if he had any comments about the combination of these two lots and the project as a whole.
I don't really. They are two separate lots, and so they are reducing the house itself with the new design. And Dave Clark was exactly right. If they were just to build an accessory structure on that other lot, they would need a special permit to do so. So they're labeling it a proposed dwelling, even though that's not before you, they're just showing you to get an idea how the driveway ties in with the common driveway. I mean, it all makes sense to me, but that's for you guys to decide. Four is off the table at this point. It's just future, and it will happen, and it will be a garage under potentially with a two-bedroom dwelling above.
Is there anything that we need to know about common driveways, or is it the way it is?
It never behooves anyone to share anything in common, it's my experience, but if it's all family, it could be a different situation. The only thing I saw on the plan, and we can flush it out at the time of the building permit, was the crawl space floor is at elevation 6.1. They're calling it out at 6.1, but the grading behind the house seems to be a little higher than that. So that's something I can deal with during the time of the building permit, but I just want to make sure that the basement or crawl space area complies with FEMA regulations.
With FEMA regulations, yeah.
Building code, FEMA, hand in hand.
Thank you.
So the only thing I want to comment on is that I was on stake overload when I pulled up, and I think, just, I was going to throw this out there, it would be nice if we could color-code the stakes, maybe at some point in time, thinking about conservation, having, even if it's like a green flag, and then zoning board having maybe a red flag. It would be helpful because I have ADD, and this was a nightmare, you know, trying to figure out how this goes.
Actually, conservation requires us to provide them with a color chart of the stakes, and each color does have a meaning. I'd be happy to include that in, well, get it to Bill and where it goes from there next time we file one.
And it's not a criticism because we can't, you know, I'm just thinking that it would be helpful, don't you think?
Yes, absolutely. It's why conservation asked for it 10 years ago and.
Yeah, oh, they have? Yeah, this is, this was unprecedented, though, in my experience.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
It was just a.
Yeah, because we have floodplain.
Confusing is never helpful with this board. It may be in court, but it's not helpful, yeah.
An engineer's penmanship is not the best, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much for listening to that. If we want to close the public hearing, Ginny, move to close public hearing and deliberate?
I moved to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right, so deliberate. Dave Veitch?
Well, despite all the confusion and varying things, overall, I think it's a good project. I, you know, they, is, for at least what I see in Chatham, you know, the three-foot roof overhangs are a little bit not the norm, but I think it looks, the house looks good, and they, they know that they, that that's a, you know, adds to the ground, the footprint of the building. And I think that the, it looks good. The rendering looks good, and the project overall, again, there'll be, will be an improvement with respect to the FEMA regulations, and I think it'll be a better house than the one that's there. And then, all said and done, on the other lot with the garage and everything, I think it'll be a nice project. So I can support it. I will support it. It's certainly not, I wouldn't, couldn't find this to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, no.
Mr. Nixon, could you?
No. No, I could not find this to be substantially more detrimental. And I particularly enjoyed the architect's discussion of the process and how it ended up this way and all that. I thought that was very meaningful.
Very good. Lee?
I agree with my colleagues, and I want to say that the rendering that you showed on the screen was very helpful as well.
I thought so, yeah.
I will admit, it was very confusing at first, but now your presentation has cleared it up, so thank you.
And Steve?
I think it's a good project, very unique, to say the least. I can't imagine what's going to happen if and when the Rybex don't own the property any longer, but it should be interesting to find out. But I think it's a good project, nice-looking new dwelling, and I think it's fine. Thank you.
And Ginny?
Well, the reason I was asking all those questions to Mr. Riley and to Mr. Clark was, if we're only looking at this lot, it's a large house. The total lot is 11,700 square feet with only 6,600 buildable uplands. So just looking at that house, it seemed, and in a floodplain, so it seemed worth, I think, challenging some of the dimensions and the setbacks and things like that. However, Mr. Riley did a terrific job of explaining, although we're not talking about Lot Four, it is part of this, and I think it's additive because on a net basis, the redevelopment of the whole thing is a net positive than what could be there if it was going to be a separate dwelling there. I think that is the reason why then I think the, what was otherwise a larger house on this very small lot makes it work for me. So, and I think the drawing, or the rendering of the proposed new dwelling is very attractive.
So, very good, very good. So I agree with Ginny, and, you know, and just to answer the question about permeable driveway, it has to stay permeable unless you pave it, and so they're not allowed to pave it.
Right.
So there's no universe where this could all of a sudden become something that water collects on. It doesn't work like that, the laws of physics. And then also, I think that the rendering is beautiful, and it is disturbing that we, time and time again, we allow construction in a flood zone, but it's never new construction. It's always under a special permit that the law provides for. So it's not like we're here saying, yeah, that's great to do new construction in a flood zone. We don't say that. We say, oh, you want to do something over, under the auspices of the law, and we're bound to that. So although it might sound disturbing, it is what it is in terms of the law. So with that, Ginny?
So I move to approve application 20-060.
With any conditions, Mr. Riley, in terms of the time of year, what do you apply?
I don't, if you look at the, if you look at the site plan, there's a significant difference, distance between the proposed construction site and the road, and we have both lots, there's places where vehicles can be stored, and the.
What about summertime construction?
What I would suggest would be no work on weekends, no work before 8:00, no work after 5:00, but they should be able to work during the summertime.
Okay, what do people think about that? You all right? You all right with that? You all right with that?
I never liked that, but.
No, then you don't have that.
I'm in the minority.
No. What about you, Steve?
I'm not a fan of it either.
All right, that's two to two on the voters. Ginny, you're the tiebreaker. Summertime construction or not?
Uh, no.
No, sorry about that.
Yeah, see, but you know, you don't want fair that is. One-third of the year, they can't do any work.
Okay, well.
Really unfair.
This is how it's going to be today. And something about town landings, Sarah?
There is a town landing right next to this project, and I didn't know if the board wanted June 15th or June 30th for their end of exterior construction date.
Okay.
Why would that possibly have an effect?
We're going to talk to this side of the room for that, June 15th or June 30th with your condition? your condition?
I guess I would say June 30th.
All right, trying to be nice now.
Yep.
The other thing is all vehicles off the street, right? That's important in this spot.
It's very tight, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. So, all vehicles.
Just, you know, we disagree completely because.
Yeah, we know you do.
Well, I mean, first of all, it's not exactly a very heavily-used town landing, because it's Taylor's Pond, where they can, where they will have to walk out to Nantucket Sound because there's no water in Taylor's.
We're not going to entertain debate on what we're going to vote on, so we understand your position, and now we're going to vote. Jenny?
Do you want me to read the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to approve application 25-060 with the following conditions: that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner between June 30th and September 15th. No exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach? Oh, yes, Mr. Nixon.
As you know, all of our votes are supermajority. If we're voting on the conditions, they would not pass, because there was two no's. There was three yeses. So, I don't think.
I didn't see it that way, but I always defer to you on rules. You've been here a lot longer than I have. I thought of these kind of votes as majority votes. Am I wrong?
I think you are, because.
Okay, fair enough.
You know, it's supermajority.
Okay, yeah.
I truly believe.
Okay, so now.
I'll change mine back to.
Yeah. Okay. So, now we're going to have no summer conditions, right?
The summer time conditions, as suggested, would still be, apply, but the ban on exterior construction will be taken out.
Right.
So, what would still apply is no work permitted on weekends.
Right, no work permitted on weekends and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, yeah, just removing.
Removing the line that says no exterior construction allowed.
Yep.
Okay, so now they can work in the summer?
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Oh, yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you very much. Now I'm happy.
All right. All right, so, that was easy. Now, we're going to go to, let's see, Mill Creek? No, do we just, yes, we're going to go to 94 Mill Creek Road now. Frank and Whitney Heavey, care of William G. Litchfield, whenever Sarah's ready.
Application number 25-064, Frank and Whitney Heavey, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 94 Mill Creek Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 3C, Block 27, Lot 41. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located six feet from the southern lead butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The existing building coverage is 757 square feet, 7.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,429 square feet, 14.3%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 10,005 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome back, Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you very much. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Frank and Whitney Heavey, who are in the last row. Frank and Whitney purchased this house some 20 years ago down in South Chatham, and it is now their year-round residence. Frank works from home, would like to do so in a better setting, and Whitney's mother is going to be moving in with them, so they need some additional room for both of those reasons. And that is the site, the site plan. We are proposing to demolish the existing house. We did contemplate renovating what was there, but it was built originally as a summer cottage, is not overly well insulated, has some wiring problems. In fact, there was the beginning of a fire from wiring not too long ago. So, it makes more sense economically and otherwise for the Heaves to tear down what is there, although they very much like it. They've loved it for the 20 years they've been there. But they are proposing to replace the three-quarter cape with a full cape, and Sarah will bring that up, I'm sure, and that is what is proposed. A little bit further, or a little bit of an addition on the right-hand side from those plans, but otherwise very similar to what is there now. So, I'll go into the criteria as to adequacy of site. Every nearby lot is non-conforming. The existing house is very small, the lowest at 7.6% in coverage. The deck, and only the deck, which is going to be removed, is non-conforming as to the sideline. I think in approving a special permit, you can find that the site is adequate for the new home, which meets all of the requirements of our zoning bylaw, street, sideline, and coverage. This is a Bjorkland hearing, so-called. And with a footprint of 1,429 square feet, it is rather far from a McMansion, which the Bjorkland here case determined was something that you could consider. As to compatibility of size on the third page of the handout, as you will see, the existing house is the smallest in the area, with a living area of just 1,190 square feet on a footprint of 757 square feet. We're proposing to increase that to 1,429 square feet, but that will remain compatible. Mass, the word mass is not really applicable to this house or much of Mill Creek Road. It is a modest change from what's existing there, and is still consistent with 2,300 square feet of living area. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, we can't do anything about the lot size, which again is pervasive in that part of town. And the sole dimensional nonconformity, the nonconforming deck, will be removed, so there is no increase. As to environmental issues, there are none. The site is suitable for residents, as it has been since developed in 1950. As to scale, citing mass, views, and vistas, we have at present a small three-quarter cape, appropriate surroundings. If you approve it, we will have a small full cape, appropriate for its surroundings. It is somewhat larger, but the scale remains appropriate, with essentially no change in sighting or streetscape, and with neighborhood support, as the chair will read later. As to compatibility of use, it is residential use and will remain year-round residential use. Adequacy of water and sewage, we have town water. There is a Title V for three bedrooms, and the chair will read a letter from the health agent who has no concerns, no change in the number of bedrooms. There are no traffic flowing, safety, noise, and litter issues. So, as you know, the issue is to determine whether the proposed completely conforming new house with greater but still consistent living area and a far greater usefulness to the family is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists now. Again, the proposed house meets all dimensional requirements, and the one nonconformity existing, the deck, will be removed. We have a traditional cape design, an expansion of a three-quarter cape to a full cape is the historic norm, and parenthetically, the historical commission reviewed it and did not find the current house to be historically significant. The added living areas, I indicated, will now allow another generation to live with the owners and to facilitate Frank's working from home, but with much-needed space. So, as I indicated also, they contemplated renovation, but it just wasn't feasible. So, in light of the criteria and the plans in this location, I think that you can find the proposed change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? I don't see any hands. Going to now go to the letters, and there are four. First one from the, the, let's see, what do I call that again?
Historic.
Historic commission. It is 94 Mill Creek was not considered historically significant, and they did not impose a demolition delay, and that was received on August 25th, 2025. Next, we have a note from a health agent, George Geo, August 21, no concerns. Sarah Cortez from 17 Perriwinkle Lane, South Chatham, received August 25th, 2025, tells us she's writing in support of the application. Their pleasure to have the Heaves as neighbors, and they, they realize that this change will allow Frank and Whitney to continue fundraising efforts for cancer research, and Whitney has the ability to paint and landscape as thriving local artists. This move will also allow that Whitney's mother to move in and have room, and, let's see, their current home was purchased in 2006, was never designed for four seasons, therefore, they require a new home. The Mill Creek Road community is tight-knit. The Heaves are part of that fabric, and they are considered caring, and most importantly, they contribute to the community. Next, we have a note from Jan and Wynne McClausend, 154 Mill Creek Road. They write on August 15th, 2025, they want to express their support for this application. The Heaves are great neighbors, and it's wonderful that they have this commitment to the neighborhood. So, anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question, or wishes to speak against? No, very good. Questions from the board? Lee?
Have they, I don't see anywhere on the site plan, any mechanicals, AC units, generators?
There are none shown. If any exterior mechanical appliance systems, as our bylaw calls, condensers, they will have to meet the zoning setback. So, there are none contemplated that would require relief.
Okay. And when we visited the property, the owner mentioned the deck and said that it's not going to be as long as it is shown, and I just want to make sure.
Mr. Briggs is very adept at reviewing plans and allowing decreases. I don't think that would be an issue.
I just didn't want to get in trouble if something wasn't the way it was approved. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
No questions.
David Nixon?
No.
No questions.
Mr. Veach has no questions, and I'm just going to inquire, I forget if you mentioned it, they're going to keep that tree in the front, the willow tree?
I should have mentioned it, and I neglected to. The Heaves are committed to keeping the willow tree.
Yeah.
We explained that to the concert, to the historical commission. It may have to be trimmed a little bit on the house side, but they love the tree. They're a pain in the butt, but that's my opinion. And they want to retain the willow tree.
Yeah, too bad the cherry tree wasn't in front, too, but that's going to meet its demise, I think, unfortunately. Yep. Okay, so with that, Jenny, do you want to just move to close?
I moved to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I second, and, no, I can't second, you already did. I'll just vote yes instead.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
All right, deliberations. Steve?
Well, I think this is a very nice project. They're correcting the one setback issue that they have, and other than that, I think it'll fit into the neighborhood very nicely, and I don't see any issues with this at all.
Yeah, and Jenny?
Yeah, I agree. I think the height was really important, that it's at 2610. Because the lot is small, and so when a house goes up and out, it, you know, contributes to the mass, which this does not with the thoughtful proposal of 2610. I do see that it's doubling in the building coverage. It's almost to the max, but it's not. But it makes, the proposal is very appropriate, and I think with the lower height, it makes a big impact. It looks like a terrific project, and I think it meets all of our criteria.
And, Lee, do I, no, sorry?
I agree. It's a, I think it's a great project, and it meets our criteria.
Mr. Nixon?
I like projects like this, where only one envelope is being pushed, and that is the percentage, as Jenny mentioned, but yet it's not even close where there's a mistake, and we have to have that board meet. It's for a family that spends their time here, work here, volunteer here. It's, it's 100%.
Yes, and Mr. Veach?
Yeah, definitely a big improvement for the family, fits the neighborhood very well, going to fit right in. You know, the numbers for the existing footprint of 757 square feet. I mean, yes, it's getting larger, but this is still a modest-sized home, and will fit just perfectly in the neighborhood, and not substantially more detrimental at all, and so we'll support it.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy when people live here year-round, and then they're not just flipping it so that they can rent it out, which is quite nice, and it's good for the environment. And the other thing, I was a little surprised that Historic didn't pause on this, because it was such a cute house, and, you know, it's just so classic Cape Cod, but they didn't. So, yeah, great, what do I know? So, Jenny?
So, I move to approve application 25-064 as submitted with the following conditions. I think we need those for summer. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner between June 30th and Labor Day. No exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to 202 Lime Hill Road, care of James Norcross. I think this is going to be continued to a new date, so let's, let's do that.
Application number 25-065, the Lime Hill 22 Trust, care of James M. Norcross, Esquire, Pubox 707, Chatham, Mass., care of 2633, owner of property located at 202 Lime Hill Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12E, Block 4, Lot B6. The applicant seeks to create an unpaved footpath and construct an elevated walkway under Section 4A 3A of the protective bylaw. The lot contains 31,100 square feet in an R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Mr. Norcross.
Thank you, Jamie Norcross, representing Ken and Jennifer Heiser. We are asking for a continuance until your November 6 meeting. My clients are working on a revised location for the path and the walkway to address concerns raised by one of the neighbors, so that should give us sufficient time for new plans and to go back to conservation.
All right, okay. Does anybody have an issue with that? No? Jenny?
Hey, I moved to approve the request for continuance of application 25-065 to November 6.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
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 Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, and that's 2025.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, we're going to go to 693 Orleans Road. We have three more applications left. Go ahead, Sarah.
Application number 25-066, the Katie Ann Teralt Trust, 2023, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 693 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12I, Block 15, Lot 2. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling and a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the dwelling and kennel and the construction of a new dwelling and guest house. The proposed dwelling and guest house will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 2,386 square feet, 4.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 5,197 square feet, 9.8%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it has 20 feet of frontage, where 150 feet is required. The lot contains 83,625 square feet in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Katie Terrialta's trustee, although when he's on his good behavior, she lets her husband Mark live with her. Unfortunately, the Terrialts could not be here.
Unfortunately, the Terrialts could not be here today, but their architect, Eric Tolly, is in the rear and Eric can talk, if you would like, about the architectural plans. As Sarah indicated in the hearing notice, this may be the largest non-conforming lot in the town of Chatham. It is two acres, but it does not have a lot of frontage on Orleans Road. The lot pre-exists zoning, as do the rather dilapidated. In fact, David Clark, who did the site plan, couldn't quite fit the entire lot on the plan. The site plan that goes out toward Orleans Road is not fully shown because the scale would have been kind of useless for you. But it is a long and narrow lot and actually it's very similar to a couple of lots down the street at 643 and 663 Orleans Road, which have similar configurations. Several of the lots of the neighborhood are long and narrow, but those two other lots are also multi-acre lots and have on them houses which are consistent with what we propose to build. Terrialts purchased this property last year after a long process and they've been working on their plans for quite some time. The current condition of the property is not the Terrialt's fault. It became quite rundown over a number of years and I can talk a little bit about that later. Given the length of the hearing that you've had to date, I would ordinarily invite Eric to talk about the plans, but perhaps you might be satisfied if Sarah puts them up and then if there are questions, he will certainly be happy to answer them. As to the criteria, we have, again, a very large lot, non-conforming only as to the frontage. The existing structures are quite small, coverage of 2.9% of the entire lot and that includes the kettle, kennel. At 83,000 square feet, the site is adequate for a house and a guest house with only two bedrooms, meets all requirements of the bylaw, street, sideline and coverage setbacks are met. It was cited to dispense with even the necessity of filing with the Conservation Commission. We're not anywhere close to the wetlands at the rear, yet we are 500 feet back from Orleans Road. As to compatibility of size, on the third page, there is a comparison sheet, but the existing structures, the two of them, have a footprint of just under 2,400 square feet with living area of, there's a missing digit in the figure, in the first page there, but a living area of 1,292 square feet. As to compatibility of size, given the distance from the road, what we're proposing is not visible, but it will remain compatible, especially if you look at the numbers for the adjacent lots at 643 and 663 Orleans Road. We have coverage of 9.8% of the buildable upland, but just 6.2% of the entire lot, portion of the lot in the rear, while not wet as such, is not counted for buildable coverage areas, although the Board of Health does include it. That is an obvious change from what's there now, but it, again, can't be seen from the street and what is proposed meets all dimensional requirements. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, there is none. We are completely conforming. We can't do anything about the frontage. As to suitability of site, we have a typical residential neighborhood. Again, the long, narrow, quote, "rear" lots of Butte-Frost Fish Creek wetland, but the site is suitable for residence as it has been for 100 years. We are, however, proposing something sited completely on the upland, far from the resource area or, for that matter, far from anything else. As to scale, siting, mass, views and vistas, as I indicated through no fault of the Terrialts, the existing structures became somewhat rundown and are frankly dilapidated at this point, although they're not really visible, certainly the old Chatham Dog Club is not. The Historical Commission found them not to be historic. What we are proposing is to scale, that is that, what is there now, that's the original Worthing family house. What is proposed is obviously larger, but again, it's sited 500 feet back from Orleans Road. The scale and mass are appropriate for a two-acre lot in a private location without impact on views and vistas. If you look at 643 Orleans Road, 97,000 square foot lot, they've got 8,000 square feet of gross floor area. 663 Orleans Road, a 62,000 square foot lot, almost 8,000 square feet of gross floor area. This lot is larger than 663 and has a similar gross floor area number. So, our end-living area numbers are also consistent with those found at those two lots down the street. As to compatibility of use, we have a former commercial, quasi-commercial and residential use. Those of you who've been on the board for any length of time may remember that the kennel was before you. Several years ago, the neighbors were not universally in favor of its continued existence. As to adequacy of water and sewer, currently there is a cesspool of uncertain functionality which is going to be removed and replaced. The health agent, as the chair will read, has no concerns. We have more than sufficient area for a five-bedroom house and a two-bedroom guest house and the septic plan has already been approved. The traffic flow and safety, again, when there was a kennel there, that generated traffic and the purely residential use will generate less traffic than had been the case. The same applies to noise and litter. The former kennel was arguably noisy and the purely residential use will not be. All utilities are in place, so the issue for you to determine, as you know, is whether this proposed, completely conforming house and guest house, on a very large lot, far from neighbors, of a scale and size appropriate for the site, whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that you can find it is not. Again, the proposed new house and guest house meet all dimensional requirements and the requisite comparison, of course, as to what's there at present, which unfortunately is a detriment to the neighborhood and that's getting away from the fact that the kennel is closed. I think this construction will have decidedly positive impact on the neighborhood, the removal of the rundown buildings and be an overall improvement. I have spoken with a couple of neighbors who didn't write, but I can relate to you that they are supportive of it. The applicants, as I explained, spent many months working with David Clark and Eric Tolly and also Andrew Garrelly, our landscape designer, I think you have the plans for that, designing something that was completely compliant with all zoning, conservation and health requirements and regulations and which would have essentially no impact, let alone a substantially more detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So, in light of the criteria and the plans, particularly as cited on this very large lot, I think that you can find that the proposed house and guest house are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and Eric and I would both be, as would David Clark, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. There are three. First one, the usual note from our health agent, received on 8/21/2025. I have reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild a dwelling on this property. The plan for a five-bedroom dwelling and a two-bedroom guest house has been approved by the health division and a septic permit has been issued. The property has over 70,000 square feet of lot area as defined by the Board of Health Nitrogen Loading Regulation and therefore can accommodate seven bedrooms. The Chatham Historic Commission opined on August 25th, 2025, that they find that this property is not historically significant and therefore did not impose a demolition delay. Next, we have a letter from a neighbor named Brian Minor, received on August 19th, 2025. We're writing to offer enthusiastic support for Mark and Katie's proposed dwelling and guest house renovation and new construction projects on the south side of Orleans Road have lagged over the last 10 years compared to waterfront development. We appreciate the work of the ZBA to support special permits that have been granted in Chatham Port and expect there will be more applications in the years ahead. It's gratifying to know that long-term neighbor, Valerie Piper, will become the future resident of the family home. Next, we will see if there's anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question. No. Questions from the board? Mr. Nixon?
None.
Mr. Veach?
I have no questions.
Ms. Fenwick?
Mrs. Fenwick? I have no questions.
Steve?
Steve has no questions.
No questions.
And nor do I. Okay, Jenny?
I move to close the hearing and move to deliberations.
David seconds and votes yes.
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 Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, very good. So, deliberations. Mr. Veach?
What's not to like? You know, it meets all the requirements of the bylaw and it's absolutely going to be an improvement over what's there and so it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in any way, shape or form, meets the requirements of bylaw and our criteria and I'll be supporting it.
Mr. Nixon, anything further?
I agree with Mr. Veach.
Well, that happens once in a while.
I agree. I totally support this application.
And Steve?
Well, as much as I'd hate to have the town lose another antique house from 1930, I think, the house that's there now has some very interesting, I guess you'd say, architectural features and I think it's beyond renovation, so the project that's being proposed, I think, is a vast improvement over what's there and I have no issues.
Jenny, do you?
I don't. I think it's a thoughtful redevelopment of this property. I appreciate not pushing it to within inches of the maximum. They're right at the building coverage, but it's a huge lot and I, it meets all of our criteria. I would support it.
Okay, so can we have a motion to close the, wait a minute? Yes. We already did that. A motion for a vote, I apologize.
Okay, I move to approve application 25-066 as submitted with, do we need A, 2A?
I think just the first one, Jenny, the all-on-site.
Construction?
Yeah.
Okay. With these conditions, that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on the site or at a neighboring property with permission of the property owner and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Veach?
David seconds and votes yes.
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 Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Five out of five. Thank you very much. Okay, we have two more applications. The next one is 25-067, Thomas and Jill Madigan, care of James Norcross, 22 Shady Acre Drive. My understanding is we're going to do the hearing and then vote on this on a different date. Is that your understanding, sir?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Application number 25-067, Thomas and Jill Madigan, care of James M. Norcross, Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass., 02633. Owners of property located at 22 Shady Acres Drive, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 7E Block 2, Lot R1. The applicant proposes to change, alter or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and that is located 2.5 feet from the southerly abutter. The proposed addition will be non-conforming and that will be located 2.4 feet from the southerly abutter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 878 square feet, 8.3%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,214 square feet, 11.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming and that it contains 10,525 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Norcross?
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Tom and Jill Madigan. Tom is here with me in the audience in the blue shirt in the back. Just to explain briefly, Madam Chair, I can, the reason for the continuance request at the end is there was a miscommunication and the historical filing did not happen on time and so the Historical Commission meeting won't be held until October 7. So, I know this board likes to go last, after all their, boards have met and made their determination, so we like to present and then we can address any questions or concerns and then continue to the end of October if that is agreeable to the board.
Yes, October 23rd, I think.
October 23rd, yes.
Yes, very good. Okay, so proceed.
Excellent. So, Mr. and Mrs. Madigan somewhat recently made this their full-time residence and so it's a modest-sized cottage right now and they're looking to, two additions to the north and south side of the existing home to create some more living space for the property. You can see it on the site plan now. And essentially, they're squaring off the existing structure and this addition will allow them to have a traditional primary bedroom with a walk-in closet and a bathroom. The addition on the north side will provide a mudroom area and some additional storage space for the property. Even though we are increasing, it is a modest-sized increase, we're adding 336 square feet total to the footprint of the home. The property is non-conforming, it's 10,500 square feet in an R20 zoning district. The existing house is non-conforming as it's located, as you can see on the plan, two and a half feet from the south lot line where a 15-foot setback is required. The addition on the south side where we're squaring off that and obviously will not comply with the 15-foot setback to the south lot line. The addition to the north will meet all sideline setbacks and we remain conforming in terms of the setback to the street. Our building coverage is going just over 11%, but we're still well below the 15% allowable for this property. Going into the criteria, number one, adequacy of the size of the site in terms of size, we believe the size of the site is adequate. While I mentioned the lot is smaller than neighboring properties, the proposed addition only increased the building footprint by 336 square feet and we remain well below the 15% maximum allowed. In terms of height, we're not increasing the height, it's currently 17 feet tall at its highest point and so well below the 30-foot building height requirement in Chatham. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, I provided a gross floor area analysis at the end of the handout and, again, I'd suggest, based on that review, the home is smaller than just about all the other neighboring properties in this immediate area and even with the addition, it's going to remain smaller than the neighboring properties. Extent of proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure, that would be on our south lot line as we are increasing the size of the home relative to that setback. However, given the modest size of the addition, I don't think it will create any issues with regards to massing for the abutter to the south and there is a letter from that abutter in support of the project today. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties, we believe the site is suitable for the project. There's no wetlands in this area and so no impact on neighboring properties or in the natural environment. Impact of scale, siting and mass and neighborhood visual character, again, I think there's no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. As seen from the street, the additions will blend in nicely with the existing home. The size of the structure is increasing within the setback to the south, as I mentioned, but the addition maintains the building height and the scale and mass of the proposed project is compatible with the neighborhood. Number six, single-family residence in a residential neighborhood, so that is compatible. Methods of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, the property is connected to town water. There are no issues with drainage on this site, it's a very flat site. In terms of the septic, there's a letter from the health agent, Judith Giorgio, talking about upgrading, increasing the three bedrooms from two and the requirement for an IA system. My clients have met with their architect and they're revising the floor plan, which will provide, in advance of the next meeting, where it's only going to be a two-bedroom home. So, they're removing one of the smaller bedrooms and that'll be converted into an office. So, it's going to maintain as a two-bedroom structure. Since we have to continue, we'll provide that plan. We have that ready next week for you in advance of the next hearing. And number eight, nine and 10 really are not applicable in this instance. So, again, the Madigans with the goal of living here full-time and having a little bit more comfort and living area for their existing home, feel this will provide them with that and we do not believe it is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Yes, sir, in favor.
All right, Ryan Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I'm speaking on behalf of my friend, Justin Jacinto, who lives on 46 Shady Acres and what he says is he likes the people that live at 22 Shady Acres and he supports the project.
Okay, thank you very much. So, anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project? I don't see anybody else. Next, we will read the correspondences and there are three. First one from Judith Giorgio, she has received the plan to add an addition to the dwelling. The site plan shows, showing the location of the septic system is required. The property is an existing two-bedroom dwelling. They are proposing an increase in flow to three bedrooms. This will require an AI system to reduce bedrooms. This will require an AI system to reduce nitrogen septic. So that was received on 8/21/25, and you've already addressed that, so that's that. Christina Basset from the Chatham Historical Commission tells us that they're set to hear the hearing on October 7th, 2025, so we'll put ours over till after that. That was received on August 25th, 2025. And lastly, we have a note from Diana Casey, 3, driver of a court, Reading, Connecticut, 150, no, 1952 Main Street, Chatham, Mass. Her name is Diana Casey. Her husband Sean and herself want to support, want to support the project and the renovations. They own a property on 15, 1952 Main, and they know their neighbors, and they, it's their understanding that they have a hearing coming up, and they want to express their complete support. Excited for the family to enjoy comfortable changes to their space. And the renovations bring beauty and warmth to our close neighborhood and community. The actual work hours and timeline, when that is set, will not negatively impact our time in our home and is of no concern. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question or wishes to speak against? Yes, sir. Please.
My name is Richard Creath. I live at 1934 Main Street, which is the easterly abut to this property. And I don't think I'm opposed, so don't get nervous. I just had questions, and I think they were answered by your presentation. The height is not going to increase, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I, the layout looked good. It's a neat, tidy property. It's well looked after. Clearly needs a bit of work in places, and I think this will probably be a good addition to the neighborhood. I just have one question. The eastern setback doesn't change at all. They're good neighbors, as far as I know. I think we wave across the fence occasionally. Septic, Town Sewer is right on Route 28 there. It's an awful shame that it couldn't go up there and connect to these properties.
Mr. Madigan was mentioning that to me earlier, so I think you're in, you're in agreement on that, but I guess it's not on a list.
Okay.
For the near future for sewer.
Okay, okay. Well, anyway, I didn't know whether I was in favor or opposed, but I guess I'm in favor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else with a question or wishes to speak against? Either here or online? No, no one that I can see. Questions from the board? I'm going to do the, are there any, but I know people will speak up. Are there any? Mr. Nixon, please.
Well, no, not a question.
No. Okay, so we'll wait for deliberations? All right, we'll do that. Questions? Yes, Ginny?
So Jamie contemplated three bedrooms, and you would need to upgrade the septic for that and decided not to do that.
Correct.
Okay. No change to the location of the septic?
No, the septic's going to remain as is. The architect thought the living room qualified as an existing three-bedroom, but Judy disagreed with that interpretation, so it's an existing two-bedroom. So they're going to have to modify one of the proposed bedrooms on the interior.
Okay, thank you.
We're actually going to do questions and comments now because we're going to deliberate next time, and so now I'm going to go back to Mr. Nixon for your comment.
Yeah, my comment is, Jamie, unfortunately, by making the southerly distance, which is bad, even worse, would cause me probably to vote no, and I'm simply going to leave it at that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Now you want to take the other side of that.
Point one, point one feet due to converging building line and lot line, I, I, it's hard for me to see that that's significant, or I understand it certainly is close to the lot line, but a tenth of a foot is about that much, and I just don't think that it's significant.
So Jamie Norcross can count on your vote?
Probably.
All right. Yes, Ginny, comments?
Yes.
All questions?
Comment. So when I went to the property, I think it's really cute. It's adorable. Loved the lot, and I thought, oh, my gosh, whoever let that happen? Meaning, the existing home being a foot and a half from, so I agree with Mr. Nixon that I feel like I can't be part of, you know, that being, allowing that to happen. I understand what Dave Veitch is saying, but we aren't just, we're talking about expanding the, I think it's going to be a bedroom that's going to go there. So the expansion of that non-conformity, which is so close, is, I'll just say it's a concern of mine.
So Jamie Norcross, if you'd like to explain, you also have a friend in Sarah in terms of ability to provide an explanation, but it's your hearing, so how would you like to go about that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand what you're talking about.
So Sarah is willing to give an explanation about how this happened, if you'd like to do that?
Oh, well, sure.
So this 1952 Main Street and 22 Shady Acres had all been one property previously. In 2011, by approval not required through the planning board, the properties were divided because both of them predated zoning, 1954, so that was able to be done, and that is why the houses are so close. Both are within, you know, less than five feet from the setback because they had previously been one lot.
Thank you, Sarah. Jamie, what is the length of that extra room that's being requested? That bedroom?
Let me see. I believe it is 13 feet, 6 inches.
No, just the part that's, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the addition. I think, to sort of try and answer your question concern, the Madigans looked at a number of options in terms of tearing down, rebuilding. This was most feasible for them to do an addition. Adding on to the north side is challenging more than what they're already doing because of the septic location, and the layout of the house adding on to the back is not very conducive either. So this was really the natural space to create the addition. We understand the, it's point one feet closer to the existing lot line. Again, I think if you look at, if you look at the site plan, you'll see the neighboring property. It's actually the house, the way it's coordinated.
It's the back.
Sighted. It's the back, and it's also, it's the furthest point away from the neighboring home where the addition would be because of the way the house juts out in the back. So I think it's, despite it being a flat lot, there are some challenges out there in terms of what they were trying to do.
Well, that's why I asked about the septic, because if they were willing, you know, if they wanted to do the upgrade, would that, would that require them to move it, or I guess it could be?
I don't think that would help them in terms of location, because they still need to have the setback requirement, and that's an additional, nowadays, the IA systems are quite expensive, so I think it's an additional expense they really are not willing to incur at this point.
I mean, I do really love the property and the house, and I understand, I appreciate that they want to keep it like a, like it is. So I, there are aspects of it that I really do like. I'll just say that.
Not a very heavily-traveled road.
It is not, no.
No. Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Questions? Yes, please, Lee.
I think this is one of those things that if they were to build it today, that would never have been allowed. I mean, it just, no way. So, you know, it is close. They're extending it, and I guess they're increasing it a little bit, but, or decreasing it, whatever, whichever term. But I, I think what it does is it, the exterior of the house looks very nice. I mean, I think it makes sense to put that addition there for the primary bedroom and then the mudroom. I think it, it squares out the house, and I think it looks really nice. It's a shame that it's so close to the property line, but that's the way it is. So I will be in favor.
I think I will be in favor as well, because it would be hard for me to say that it's substantially detrimental to that street, and I think the neighborhood would be that street, in my, in my view.
Yeah, we're just putting together the gross floor area analysis. I mean, you have some homes on Main Street that are abut, the gentleman here, but other than that, it's really that street.
Yeah, but you can't see those houses.
No, you can't.
At all. I go by there all the time, and I didn't even know that road was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's that. Okay, so would you like to request that we continue this to October 23rd, 2025?
Yes, please.
And Ginny?
Okay, so I move to approve the request for continuance of application 25-067 to October 23rd.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
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 Steve votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, last but not least, we have Hewin and Sedale Tomlinson, care of Roger Hoyt, 55 Seepine Road in Chatham, 25-069. Sarah?
Application number 25-069, Hewin and Sedale Tomlinson, care of Roger Hoyt, 1175 Main Street, Hingham, Mass. 02043. Owners are property located at 55 Seepine Road, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11L Block 8, Lot HC8A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 11.2 feet from the road and partially within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 12. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 26 feet from the road where a 40-foot, 40-foot setback is required, and 7.5 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance 11.2 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required, and 27.6 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 922 square feet, 10.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 963 square feet, 10.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 8,800 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 15,000 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D, 2B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Roger Hoyt, architect, representing Haywon Tomlinson, who's here, came in today from Maryland, and her sister, Sedala, who I think some of you saw on Monday at your site visit, she was here until yesterday, so the sisters are changing, changing places for the, for the house over the last couple of weeks. Tomlinson family has owned this property since 1989, and what we would like to try to do is to, is to maintain the sort of figurehead of this entrance to this, this area, Harbor Coves. It was, I think, way back in the 50s, it became a sort of real estate office and for the sale of properties and the development, and that it has an existing concrete block foundation, which we are not planning to change at all. The, the criteria, the adequacy of the site, it's 10%, I think it's 10.5. We're just adding to cantilevering over the existing foundation that's already there. We're not changing the footprint of the foundation at all. Compatibility, we're really not changing. The whole front face of this is going to look exactly the same as it does right now with some improvements in terms of the, the condition of, of some of the surfaces. This probably won't be an increase in non-conforming nature or of the structure in terms of its use. Suitability of the site for single-family residents is certainly not being changed. Impact of scale, again, nothing from the streetscape. Compatibility with the neighboring uses, it is a single-family resident. Adequate method of sewage disposal, water, and drainage. The existing septic system is planning to be, to remain. Adequacy of, impact of traffic flow. There is a parking area on-site, basically in the front, as you walk up over the millstones to the front door. It's very, very tight on that side, and as you go down towards the, the beach area, there is certainly a parking area there, but it's, it's really, you're talking about a total of 900 square feet on this site, and we, it's a, basically a two-bedroom residence, so I don't, parking shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue. Noise and litter, again, what we're doing is mostly renovating systems inside the, inside the house, and we're making some changes with the demolition of the chimney that's out and back. The adequacy of public utilities, the town water, site, septic system, and electrical, all basically services are there. We're going to increase the, the electrical service as a part of the renovation work, because we want to put an electric heat pump in to modify the, the supply of heat and cooling. And the dwellings located in a floodplain, again, we're not expanding anything to do with the, with the foundation. The basic thing is that there's a, there's a massive chimney on the back side of this house facing Crow Pond, and it's actually deteriorated to a point where this, it is a structural problem. We do not, no longer will need a flue for, for the heating system. Nobody's using fireplace in, in this plan, so we'd like to remove that particular chimney right down to the foundation, and then make a small extension over the existing foundation of a cantilever about a foot in order to provide another window view for, from the house. That living room is in that back section of the, of the site, and a view of the Crow Pond and the patio that there's a door goes directly out of the back of that side of the house to the patio. The roof is a red cedar roof, and all the trim on the house is all a white cedar, very nicely done, and it was done about 10 years ago, we think, is, is owners recollecting. It's all in very good shape, except for the windmill itself, and I think what happened was that they decided to go ahead and make the changes to the easy part, and didn't want to make all the, the special cuts, splay cuts that have to meet on that octagon where the windmill is, which both is a problem at every corner, but also it slopes up, but we, our intention is to use a number-one clear cedar shingle, no dip or anything. We want it to go back natural the way the rest of the house, and I think that all the trim, the cedar, as I said, was done about 10 years ago. It looks like it was put in last year. It's a very good quality material that was used, and we want to, we want to match that and have the thing look as it does. The red cedar roof is in great shape. They used copper for all the valleys and flashings. And again, our intent would be that the, over the two small additions, that we use a, a copper metal section of roof, not, not one of the rubber-type roofs. We want to keep the copper going, make that tie in with the existing finishes on the, on the house. See, the windows, there's, we're, we're supplying several new windows in the, the two wings, and then the windows that are going into the, there are two new windows going into the windmill itself, and those windows right now are a awning window, so we're going to match the look of those windows that are already in the windmill with the same, the same style and the same awning operation. The plan change is, is basically we're adding about 41 square feet to this, to this house, The planned change is basically we're adding about 41 square feet to this, to this house and the property. And again, not changing the foundation. We're cantilevering over that foundation to make an extension for the addition to the left of the windmill. And the same to, within the living room. If you show those pictures. So the top picture there is coming in off of Seepine. Those are all millstones. And there's a millstone at the top going into the entrance door. Lower part is that back room addition, looking out on the Crow's Pond. Again, that's going to remain pretty much as is. We've actually found already some pine floor that will match exactly that pine that's on that floor for the small extension over where the existing fireplace is. The next picture's, that's the entrance door. And on the bottom, that's a bathroom at the end of the existing left wing. And that will remain as it is. And we're converting... The kitchen is in the closest to the windmill at this point, and that's going to be converted into a bedroom. And then on the last picture, that's the, you see the fireplace in the back with, again, it puts some wood to try to hold up the brick from falling into itself. So that's the area that, that piece comes out, and there's a window that goes in that area. And the cantilever for that bedroom, just to the right of where the fireplace is, that cantilever comes out two feet to provide enough space for that bedroom.
So your presentation is impeccable, but I think that we've gotten the gist. And if you want to just close with saying, there's no way that this is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
I would say that, yes. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one here, I will read the correspondences. There are three. Our health agent tells us on 8/21/2025 that she's reviewed the plan to add in addition to the dwelling at this property. This dwelling is approved for a one-bedroom property and has been registered as a one-bedroom short-term rental. The septic system was approved for two bedrooms, and I have no objection to the dwelling being considered two bedrooms as proposed. However, the access to the second-floor bedroom is a ladder, and that may require review and approval by the building inspector for adequacy and safety. So he probably chucked that at his own peril, and hopefully that's going to be safe. Next, we have a note from the Chatham Historic Commission, and they found 55 Seepine to be historically significant. But the proposed changes do not materially diminish the historic significance. So they did not impose a demolition delay, and this was received on August 25, 2025. Lastly, we have a note from Terrence G. Sullivan, and he lives at 92 Seepine. And they've lived on Seepine full-time for 10 years. The Tomlinson Windmill has always been the signature... That's what he called it. The Tomlin... Yeah, the Tomlinson Windmill has always been the signature gatehouse to the Harbor Coves since the 1950s. We love it, as do all the residents in the area. And we're grateful that the next generation of family wants to keep it, has it's always been. They have even done, they've done their best to retain the windmill blades. With craftsmen following wind damage, not an easy task. We have every confidence that any changes to update will be done tastefully. This is a unique property the family has and is a wonderful... The family has every, we have every confidence that they'll continue to maintain the property in coordination with their past practice. It's a wonderful welcoming beacon to our community. We are very much in favor of the issuing of a special permit, and thank you. Okay, that concludes the correspondences. Do we have anybody with a question or wishes to speak against this application? Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right. Brian Phillips, 374 Lanes Road. Actually, kind of like this, but I'm just going to stay consistent. I don't think people should be doing things in flood zones, and they should be required setbacks, and they're there for a reason. Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak against or has a question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Are there any? No? No questions from the board? Okay, very good. Jenny?
Okay, I move to close the hearing and move to, into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes. Yes.
Yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, Jenny, deliberate, please.
I agree with Mr. Sullivan. Well, first of all, Mr. Hoyt, very nice summary. I agree that it's an iconic structure as you head into Harbor Coves. And I want to thank the architect and the homeowner for saving, you know, doing things to improve the home and saving it. It's historic, and I think it's a great project.
Steve?
I'm glad to see also that it's being preserved somewhat and carrying on the tradition going forward. So I think it's a very good project. I don't think you're harming that in any way.
I agree with my colleagues. Great project.
David Nixon?
It was a real pleasure and a treat to visit, and your sister was a wonderful hostess.
Very good, very good. And Mr. Veach?
Yeah, and I would echo those comments about your sister. She did a very good job. We had a great conversation. The, yeah, this is, this is a modest change to an iconic structure. I really want to support the intent to maintain this building, keep it, and not make significant changes to it. The, it just occurred to me, it's been a while since I've done sidewall shingling, but because of, I would think that it would be, in doing the work on the windmill part, that they would want to let those shingles dry out fairly well before they get into it because you're weaving the shingles on the corners, and you don't want them to shrink after that. So just some advice from an old carpenter, I guess I'd say.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a property to be proud of, and it's beautiful. I love that letter from the neighbor. And great. So Jenny?
I move to approve application number 25069 as submitted with the conditions. I think we do need them there.
Okay.
Conditions would be, all construction activity vehicles shall be contained on-site or in a neighboring property with permission of the property owner. Between June 15th and September 15th, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work should be permitted on weekends. And construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Okay, so before we vote on the application, it's come to my attention that there are certain members that do not think we need to have conditions? So why don't we, and now, it's good to know that I love rules, and four out of five votes are required. So Jenny, you obviously vote that there should be conditions? Or maybe not?
Well, I think there's no room on the property to do anything. It's right at the entrance of Harbor Coves, so everyone who lives there on the peninsula has to go by there. So, and there is a lot of construction on those streets. It's a narrow street. I think it would be, I think it would be courteous, and I think it would be really helpful to the residents in the peninsula because there's, it's all the way back and all the way around.
Okay. You'd like to have the conditions? Steve, would you?
Well, I guess I'd like to know when you plan to start the exterior work.
We were hoping to start this later this fall, November.
And what is your estimated amount of time needed?
Three to four months.
So it may be a moot point, but still, still, we, you know, you never know that one in the hand is worth two in the bush, so we don't really know. Would you want to have the conditions, Steve, or not?
Well, I think they're going to be done before...
But the issue is, do you want the conditions or no?
No.
No. And do you, Lee?
I always liked those conditions.
Yeah? Okay. If I were voting, I would not because I always remember that if you didn't have to come to zoning, you have no conditions. And so people that have to come to zoning, they're at that slight disadvantage. But it doesn't matter how I vote. You both vote, you don't, no conditions, correct?
I think the only thing that might be appropriate here would be the, all vehicles on-site or with the permission of, because, you know, we have this large parking area next to it, so they, just from the association gave them the ability to park there. There's plenty of parking. I don't think that, given the type of project and that, in our part of it at least, I don't see it as being disruptive, the exterior construction as being disruptive to the neighborhood. So I don't think, I don't think we need the no exterior construction. We could do the time, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and all, but I don't think the prohibition on exterior construction is appropriate here.
So why don't we do all vehicles remain on property or with permission from the neighbors or the association? And all construction exterior be from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00? No weekends or?
Yeah.
8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.? Fair?
Okay. Do you want me to read those in? Okay.
The 30th or the 15th of June to start.
Which one?
30th, just to be consistent for today.
Okay.
All right.
So the condition, I want to summarize them. Okay, so the conditions that would apply would be, all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with permission of the property owner. Construction between June 30th, well, I thought we're getting, okay, June 30th and September 15th would apply to only the exterior construction activity between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m.
Okay. And...
Yeah, so Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, nice to see you. And now I think we need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Very good.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
As do I. And what time is it?
4:40 p.m.
All right. And good evening, Chatham.